We've got a lot to get done today, which I know we will, and we'll have another great meeting. So we will start with the city manager's briefing. The first one will be on regional broadband initiative. David Alhanson, you are on, my friend.
Thank you, sir. Mayor, members of council, you have a resolution before you today supporting the regional broadband strategy. And I'd just like to resurface for your recall what the broadband strategy for the Hampton Roads region is. It's a four-phase strategy. It will consist of a Phase One on South Side, Phase Two will be up on the peninsula, Phase Three will connect both the peninsula and the South Side, and Phase Four will be the outline remainder of the 17 jurisdictions of Hampton Road. This is a blow-up of what the Phase One portion of the regional broadband strategy will be. This is a new chart for you all to look at. As you know, we invested in the pre-engineering study to take a look at what that Phase One connection cost might be, taking advantage of in-ground fiber systems that various jurisdictions had put in place, as well as figuring out the best path to connect four TCC campuses and the VMAS facility out in Suffolk. You can see that we are talking about a $10 million, $10.4 million project. We've got a high and a low end cost. I've given, the guys have created a table here, so as you can see, the percentage of the project that's in the various jurisdictions and the amount of fiber that has to be completed as part of this. The city of Virginia Beach has invested for well over five years in the gap infill project of Next Generation Network. That's on the heels of the schools' investment in fiber and our intelligent transportation system. We are a well-connected city. The city of Norfolk is a well-connected city, and the city of Portsmouth is a well-connected city. But our sister cities of Chesapeake and our sister city of Suffolk need a lot of work to help them. So the lion's share of this project, as a regional project, is going to support them to complete that loop to connect those four TCC campuses and VMAS. And so the percentage of the project of the $10.4 million project shown here. And so we are pursuing bottom line, a Go Virginia grant of $3.7 million. And the percentage of local-to-grant cost share by the various jurisdictions is shown here, and the dollar amounts that we think should be distributed. I've shared this table with my fellow CAOs, and Peter Wallace, our CIO, is sharing it with their CIOs. In fact, had all the regional CIOs in today for their meeting and went over the description here. So those conversations are going on. And so today you have a resolution that supports having a regional broadband strategy much larger than just what the Phase Four is, but for a $3.7 million Go Virginia grant. And so what we're really hoping is that when the Regional Go Virginia Board looks at our application and they see that for their 35% investment, 65% coming from local match, they can help implement and support us in a $10.4 million. Mr. Moss, you have a question?
The amount that's Virginia Beach, is that the amount that that's just a cost estimate and our share, that is to complete, to complete what's within our city? I'm trying to understand what...
That's to complete the portion, and we have two things working...
I'm just trying to make clear, I understand.
We have two things that's working for the city of Virginia Beach. We paid an extra $10,000 to do the evaluation of bringing the 100 gig connection from OU Campus Norfolk to OU Campus Virginia Beach. That's also a part of this connection system. And our portion to make that happen, because we have such an extensive network of fiber, they can borrow fiber here and light it up here and there, and Norfolk can too, and that's also a part of it. So our piece is purely just to get that piece completed.
Okay.
And so you have an ordinance today. All the CAOs are presenting to their various elected bodies a request for their support so that the resolutions of support...
We've already done this at the PDC, didn't we?
Right, but each of the various jurisdictions are putting in their resolution of support so that it's in the package, so that we verify all that. And that's all I have to say. Are there any questions?
Yes, John.
In the resolutions towards the end, it uses the word "private." I assume that private would include both future private and future for-profit or future non-for-profit entities, and private doesn't just have a for-profit connotation.
Absolutely.
Okay, just making sure, thank you.
Thank you, John. Thank you, Dave.
Yes, sir.
That was a good briefing.
I did read it.
My kind of brief.
That's the best yet.
In case you didn't hear that, someone said that was your best yet, Dave.
I liked the two-slide thing, we can keep that up.
Okay, data center incentives and broadband marketing. Hey, Warren, did you hear about Dave's last presentation? It was really, really good.
Hate to be the bearer of bad news, so... But hopefully it will be as a complete. And thank you, Mayor, members of council, and Dave. What we'd like to do today, and I have members of my staff, Rob Hurdon and Scott Hall, who helped in this brief, and actually the Commissioner of Revenue, who's come in and popped out, also participated in preparing this brief. We thought it was timely with not only the topic that the manager shared with you, but what also what's going on in the greater picture with regard to what's happening here in Virginia Beach with this new subsea cables that hit our shore and are going live here fairly soon, to talk about some of the marketing initiatives, some of the efforts that we've already made, some of the inroads, some of the successes, and some of the opportunities that we're going to ask council to consider here in the very near future. And then the question was asked earlier, you know, we're beginning to call ourselves a digital port. I mean, and the analogy here, of course, is that of a traditional port. As opposed to ships and containers arriving on our shore, we certainly have mass volumes of data coming to our shore. And instead of that data arriving on a vessel, it's arriving through these subsea cables. And so that idea and that concept, if you will, to begin to think of ourselves as a gateway not only into the U.S. market and vice versa into Europe, but also into Brazil, is a new way to really think about how the access and the opportunity that Virginia Beach has now of being that digital port can really affect the stream of commerce here, not only in Virginia Beach, but also Virginia and the country as well. You all were very aware and were familiar that formerly, back in Williamsburg earlier this month, Microsoft formally announced Morea. The mayor was there to be a part of that presentation. Brad Smith, Councilman Ben Davenport was there as well, along with the governor, our two senators, because it was a big day. It was a major coup for the Commonwealth of Virginia and for this city, working with tech giants like Microsoft, Facebook, and Telefonica, for them to say they're willing to put their corporate dollars into developing and having the most advanced engineering feat in terms of subsea cables coming into our market. So it was a grand day to really think about now Virginia Beach. And that website there that's listed is essentially what we're now beginning to call a one-hour commercial about Virginia Beach and what Brad Smith has said about why Virginia Beach and how that's going to really advance some of the future...
If you all, I know time is so precious, but I would just suggest, if you haven't seen that, and I mean, you can bypass what I say, you can bypass what the governor says, you can bypass what the senators say, but please don't bypass what Facebook said and Microsoft said. I would tell you that it's a calling card for our city like I've never seen.
And a little bit of what Facebook said and Microsoft and then Relus Telexis said about it is in the comments made here by Brad Smith. Obviously, you can't read it, but we decided to highlight a couple of comments here where he says, "For Microsoft, Facebook, and Telexis, this is an important day that we can stand here and say that the most advanced submarine cable running between Europe and North America runs between Spain and Virginia Beach. It took great technical work to design this cable and to engineer it. It's a first, it's a first that the cable comes ashore in Virginia Beach, bringing higher capacity and more reliability, and reflects a huge vote of confidence by our companies." And lastly, he says in there that we've lifted out of his comments here, "But we're not just committed to creating jobs and building data centers here. One of the things that is so important is that we not only invest in new technology like this cable, but that we also invest in people." So we're going to see, without question, heavy investment made by some of the tech giants here in Virginia Beach, certainly as a result of not only this cable, but some of the physical attributes that we're beginning to do, some of what you just heard as an example, as well as some of the work that you hear with regard to our marketing of these opportunities. And speaking of marketing, we've not wasted time waiting for the phone to ring or the knock at the door. We have really gone gangbusters in terms of connecting Virginia Beach to the decision-makers in the subsea cable world. Started back in January when we made a big splash at a conference called PDC, Pacific Telecommunication Conference, where we began to first introduce, you know, this idea of what Virginia Beach, who Virginia Beach is, and how we as a community have done some of the heavy lifting, if you will, with regard to a first generation, next generation of investments that will make it possible for companies to utilize, to advance their strategy. Global Links was an early investor in understanding this concept, buying at least 10 acres in corporate landing to establish a first-generation data center. We were the ITW Conference, one of the major conferences in the U.S., held in Chicago, where we had a very strong presence within the telecommunications as well as subsea and broadband communities. Dominion Power, going to talk more about Dominion Power in a few minutes, but they invited us to be their special guest at a conference held in Washington, D.C., you know, talking about not only what the current status of internet traffic is in Northern Virginia, and quite frankly, and as you all well know, if you want to talk about where a substantial amount of internet traffic, anywhere between 70% to 90% of all traffic, internet traffic in the world, you know, goes through Ashburn, Virginia. It is essentially the cloud when we talk about the cloud. But there's an opportunity, and what this opportunity and future visits to Northern Virginia has brought forward is that we're not in competition with Ashburn. We don't want to replicate what Ashburn has. Certainly, there is going to be and will be data centers here, but we have a larger aspirational goal with our campaign here, and that is to not only get into data centers, but also analytics, data analytics, and big data, and how this kind of advanced volume of information can support, you know, various industries, such as the bio industry and so forth. The Noble Technology Council, we were their special guests to serve on a panel with all of the major data center players, if you will, in Northern Virginia to talk about creating some collaboration and some connectivity with what's going on here in Virginia Beach. DFT is a major developer of data centers. They've allowed us and have toured us through a number of their facilities to better understand the physical makeup, if you will, and the construct of a data center. COPT, the same thing, major data center up in Northern Virginia. We talked about the Microsoft launch there in Williamsburg. We've been very aggressive in terms of our digital deployment material about Virginia Beach, about the opportunities, both in digital and in print format. We just came back this past month, again, major subsea cable conference in Singapore, where that, matter of fact, that photo is a photo of our booth there at the trade show. Don't want to make Brad Van Damme upset, but their conference center in Singapore is also a regional mall, all combined in one, but that's another story. But, you know, it really, what that did, again, was send a strong message into the market that Virginia Beach is a major hub and player. We were the only community in the world, and this is a worldwide conference, that had a fiscal presence whereby it allowed us to talk and have meetings with various entities having interest in not only what's going on with the Morea and Brusa cable, but what is this going on in Virginia Beach as an opportunity for us as a company. Later this month, we'll also be heading to Europe in a similar fashion, also with a fiscal presence. But what has this done? These are the people we are talking to, that are talking to us. I mean, I have a stack of cards on my desk, shared it with the manager the other day, of just the types of companies that are in conversation with us today on a regular basis, trying to understand and navigate through their business planning with what's being planned here in Virginia Beach as to how they can link up with opportunities to invest in a presence here in Virginia Beach. And so we're not short of conversations, if you will, with viable clients and interests that's out in the marketplace. And it's certainly been very exciting to have these conversations, but we're also going to be talking about some issues that we need to do to better position ourselves here in the future for the opportunity. But I do want to play this, and this is a little bit what the mayor was referring to earlier, about what the Morea cable means to us as a community, what it means to Microsoft, and what it's making in terms of noise, what kind of noise it's making into the digital community.
As Virginia Beach continues to transform from a tourist and military community into a global business community, the demand for data transmission is just blowing up. Last year, the Morea cable was announced that would connect Virginia Beach with Bilbao, Spain, and it is bringing a whole new range of opportunities and technologies to Virginia Beach.
San Jose is producing those pieces of metal that are finally destined for elements or parts of vehicles. When we started, my father made about 10,000 pieces a year, and today we make more than 100 million pieces a year. San Jose, Virginia Beach, will be a filial of what is fabricated by Barcelona. Having good communications and speed, we can communicate with both companies at any moment. Ultimately, all that we move is data and information.
San Jose is the first company of its size to invest this kind of capital and to create this number of jobs in our community.
So they're investing $17.5 million into a new plant here in Virginia Beach.
The same way that our lives are becoming more digital, the economic activities are becoming more digital. It allows for new businesses, new models of business, and activities that have not existed until now.
I think it's a great opportunity. I think it's what we needed. We need to improve our communications. Today, we don't have the speed that they require for the type of work that we're developing.
I hope this will provide many jobs, both here and in Virginia, and that San Jose is going to expand greatly.
At this moment in time, it is our responsibility as a community to look at this new technology and incorporate that into the lives of our community in the best way we know possible.
So this story that Microsoft wanted to tell here was not so much that it had anything to do with San Jose's decision to come. San Jose's decision to come was separate from the cable, but what it's saying is that that cable is making it possible for them to have better communication and to push data between their home facility in Barcelona, Spain, and their new facility here in Virginia Beach. It's a great connection between the practical use of how that cable is going to enhance business between those two facilities within our two countries. As I mentioned, there are some areas that we need to enhance our position, and I want to thank the commissioner here in being a part of some of this brainstorming that we've been able to come back with you today with some suggested ideas that we will certainly want council's endorsement in with regard to making some accommodations here. The first thing, and I will speak to these, is we needed to get our, one of our sites here in the city certified by Dominion Power. Dominion, or I should say, energy use by data centers is extremely important, and it's extremely costly. And I can't say to date, though, however, that Dominion Power, as it competes with other energy or power companies, is in a very aggressive posture in terms of their rate toward and how they accommodate data centers. So that's a plus. But there are some things, such as getting property identified as certified data center, which gets you on the list, if you will, in terms of that good housekeeping seal of approval for data centers as they look at future opportunities to grow and expand. In our conversations with cables that are not yet announced but are in the planning stages, we are hearing that it would be a great asset to us if we were to create a cable protection zone. In other words, this is a documented zone on nautical maps and infrastructure maps that show where we have dedicated the arrival, if you will, the entry, if you will, of these cables into Virginia Beach, and we'll have some comments about that. Obviously, available land, you've got to have the product, you have to have the assets on the ground, if you will, with regard to dirt that's ready, permitted primarily, but if not permitted, at least within the comprehensive plan conducive for data center development. We would like to suggest also the implementation of a technology zone that covers a certain district or a certain area of the city that makes it possible for us to utilize the potential use of incentives in that zone to support the growth and expansion of data centers. And of course, again, where the commissioner comes in play here, the establishment of a competitive tax system. So let me start with each of these separately. One, very timely, I know you can't read it. This is a letter we just received back on October 5th from Timmons Group on behalf of Dominion Power. Says, "Through a thorough review of information, we were providing a certification for Corporate Landing Business Park as a Dominion Data Center certified park. Corporate Landing Park, Business Park is a robust development with an excellent location. We believe the park will be an excellent fit for the data center site certification program, especially given the access to the incoming transatlantic fiber cables." We got the certification. "We're on a limited list of priority sites in the Commonwealth of Virginia that Dominion Power has said to the data center world, this is a preferred site in the Commonwealth of Virginia as to where you would like to locate your facility." Check. We have Corporate Landing. Corporate Landing, although it did not intentionally, in our years ago of thinking about business parks, look at it as a data center park. Data centers probably were not as prevalent, obviously, you know, 25, 30 years ago. But the good news is that not only is it the location where the cable landing station is, but it also has the capability for growth opportunities for future data centers. Global Links has put their data center and put their flag in the ground, if you will. There's an additional 133 acres in Corporate Landing, and once again, we have that certification, that seal of approval for future development. The second item, the cable landing, you know, the cable protection zone. We had the benefit and the privilege, and one of our meetings, to meet with NAFAC. Matter of fact, it was in Singapore. We met with NAFAC, and they said, "Virginia Beach, if you were to establish a cable protection zone, not only will we not endorse that, but we'll put you in a unique position that no other East Coast community or location currently has." And that is a dedicated area identified for cables in the future to know how they can gain access to the terrestrial broadband network that we have here in the city of Virginia Beach. So we're going to suggest working with our folks here to look at language, if you will, that will allow us to create such a designation so that we can proclaim to the world that here's your gateway, here's your avenue, here's your permitted route that can get you access into Virginia Beach and again into the stream of commerce here in the U.S.
How do you secure that, Warren?
There's great, Rob. I'll let Rob. Rob has had more direct conversation recently as of just...
We have a meeting scheduled tomorrow with the city attorney's office and to take that meeting off and start playing...
Yeah, the only thing, as I've been hearing, people seem to be fairly knowledgeable, you know, all it takes is someone to know where these are, and they can stop your communication pretty quick.
If you look, I think it was in last year's NDAA, if I remember correctly. And I think I mentioned this to someone, city attorney's offline, there is a provision. And matter of fact, I raised this question maybe while we were showing all the maps where the cable was. I raised the question then. I didn't know if that was such a good idea, but there is a provision in the NDAA Act of last year which allows, I think it's to restrict access and not have to show all that kind of infrastructure.
Great. The other point is that there is a map that shows you where all the cables are. So I mean, it's not a secret in a bigger world...
A lot of stuff has been removed from the public domain to restricted access, is all I'm saying.
Well, we'll certainly pursue Councilman Moss's...
Not allowing ships to anchor.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, drop their anchor, yeah. But yeah, we're taking the active steps. We have the meeting scheduled, as you said, obviously, tomorrow with legal and also with our coastal engineering folks to begin to look at that. Technology zone, certainly is something that we want to consider creating. We've had provisions that a technology zone can be created. It can take on, in many ways, the same characteristics, if you will, of our APC One program. In other words, provide incentives relative to rebate of business license tax, reimbursement of any kind of development fees, whether there be any kind of connection fees. Again, modeling it, maybe somewhat similar after the APC One program, but something that we can designate that area that includes Corporate Landing, the Dam Neck Corridor, and the surrounding properties in that area as a designated area that has been targeted and has the entitled, if you will, incentives in place for us to be, again, competitive and attractive to future development. And then now the taxation. Again, this was a collaborative effort with the city commissioner, the commissioner of the revenue's office, budget and management, and the city attorney's office certainly would like to invite Phil up at any point to also make comment here. But we looked at what our current method of taxation and depreciation and depreciation rate and method and our rate with regard to Virginia Beach regarding business, personal property, machinery, and tools, and of course, in this case, looking at a special proposal relative to creating a special class, if you will, for data centers. If I can take you back, just to look at some of our competing communities here in Virginia that have some activity relative to data center activity, comparing ourselves with regard to our current depreciation methods and tax rate, you know, we are looking to become, you know, extremely competitive with them, if you will, with regard to how we structure our method of depreciation and how we look at our assessed value with regard to, you know, where we position ourselves within the marketplace. We did take a look at three scenarios, if you will. This one being the current situation, where if you take a million-dollar value and look at applying that against our rate, you look at how it, on a three-year basis, you know, what your tax consequence, not your tax, what your...
That's 100 million dollars value and applied rates, and then through the first three years with the depreciation methods and then what would...
Correct.
Excuse me, or the taxable...
Consequence, that's correct. So you can see, we're not the lowest, we're not necessarily the highest, but, you know, we can certainly be a lot more competitive than possibly where we are today. This is if we take maybe a... This is if we take maybe a stab at looking at $1.25. You know, currently, we have $4. So, if we look at $1.25 per hundred using...
Yeah.
Yeah, using the same comparison, you can see, you know, on an annual basis for the first three years. And we use three years because that's pretty much the lifeblood of technology today. There are some situations where companies will certainly keep their equipment longer than that. But again, we're looking at this, at least initially, as it may apply, you know, to data centers. And there's typically a three-year life cycle, if you will, of most computer systems with major companies such as data centers. And then we look at the third example, again, looking at the same value, but looking at the 40 cents, which makes us competitive or at least puts us on par, at least with Hermichael County. And you can see that on a three-year basis, and if you look at the aggregate sum of that over a three-year basis, we come out, again, in this case, being the lowest alternative with regard to our competing communities. Now, I know there's some conversation too and some thought that the commissioner has put in place, looking at year four, dropping that 40 cents to 30, and year five down to 15 cents in perpetuity. So, that gives us a longer-term benefit, if you will, for those that may decide to keep their equipment on a longer-term basis than on what we see on a traditional basis of a three-year turnaround. So, there is still some opportunity and room in here for those companies that have a longer-term security of their equipment to gain increased benefit over time with that regard. So, the recommendation in this area would be to certainly look at allowing the commissioner to create this new category, if you will, for subclass category for data centers, to look at implementing a reduced rate with regard to data center equipment. And of course, this thing has some additional implications that we want to come back, don't want to necessarily create unnecessarily unknown consequences to, you know, the budget and future ability of our revenue streams, but to come back at a later date and maybe also add other general computer equipment and peripherals to this, to a schedule as well. Right now, we're only talking about data centers, relates to data centers, but I know there's an interest for us to take some time to also evaluate, certainly as it relates to the impact to our budget, how other general computer equipment and peripherals may also be included in a special taxation rate similar to that for data centers as well. Did I capture that fairly well, Phil?
Yeah.
Want to add to that? Certainly.
Bill, we're glad to have you and we thank you for your help on this.
It's been a pleasure working with Warren and his staff and quite frankly, with Dave and Budget and everybody else. This proposal, I think, is outstanding and I think Virginia Beach will be very attractive, a very attractive location for anyone interested in placing a data center, not only because of the cable but because of all the other factors Warren just discussed. With a method of assessment that we currently have without a change and a rate of 40 cents per hundred dollars assessed, we would be the leader in Virginia, more competitive than any other locality. And under the law, you are able to create a subclassification of business property for data centers. When you do that, however, I must tax or I must use the same method of assessment for all computers. So, I would ask that you also create a subclass for computer equipment. And that method of assessment that Warren touched on, where it's 30%, excuse me, 40% for the first three years, 40% of original cost, and then dropping from 40% to 30% in the fourth year and 15% in the fifth year into perpetuity. I think that this will not be something that really will make a lot of difference to data centers. They're going to churn and turn their property probably every three years. They're in the data management business. They want to be on the leading edge and have state-of-the-art equipment, so they're not messing around. However, broader uses of computer equipment, a business, a small business or a medium or large business, may keep it a little longer. I'm finding that larger businesses are beginning to lease it more often and they churn it in three years as well. And then it's sent by the lessor into the secondary markets and, you know, it's not something that we're worried about. But this opportunity that provides itself with the cable, with the land that we have, with the environment and the business environment in Virginia Beach, which is already vibrant and already a positive environment, I think that we are a natural fit for data centers and we should seize. I hope that you guys will seize this or call on me or Dave or anybody in staff to help back up this assertion. Secondly, it is an opportunity that I hope that we can all work together on. It's my job to find property and assess it and find and assess it close to fair market value as possible. It's your job to decide what classes you want to create and what rate you want to create for taxation. And I think this provides an opportunity for us to do that, where we can tax computer equipment across the board at a much more market-friendly rate. Makes us competitive, brings us forward and accentuates the fact that we're a place where people want to do business.
Very good. Any questions? Yes, Shannon, and then John.
Go back a couple slides, please. That one's fine, or either one before it. Explain to me how our numbers, our estimates stay the same in years one, two and three, but all the other localities have a higher second year number and then they all fluctuate between the three years.
Those numbers are taken into effect. We took a sample of Virginia Beach property. I've got a spreadsheet here. I thought y'all might have a little data overload, but I did bring a spreadsheet just in case we needed.
I know you did that just for me.
Pun intended. Huh?
I know you did that just for me.
Yeah, just for a fact.
And Patty's next, great.
But let me see if I can capture this for you. You're saying that in years one, two and three, the numbers are changing...
Yeah, if you look at the slide even before that...
I understand.
You can go back to depreciation.
Ours is consistent, I just...
Yeah, that's the one that's... It's number 23. I remember that. You can see that air method is 40% and constant across the line.
Right.
That's part of the problem. You know, it's great in the first two years you have property. If you have a computer, it may appreciate much more quickly. You have something that doesn't depreciate as fast. It's great. But in the eighth year, the 10th year, it's pretty tough. And if it's a computer, you're going to be appealing your assessment probably. So, this data center opportunity really is helping us. You can see other localities, they have their own scale or method of making it a little less in ensuing years. And that's part of my proposal. 40, 40, 40, 30, 15 into perpetuity for computers. Does that answer that?
John Moss.
Well, I want to still any Ben's thunder. I'm just...
No, please.
I was just saying, when I first saw this come out, I sent a note, Bill, by email, and I asked Dana to actually construct an ordinance that would actually... I didn't know this was coming at the time, but obviously Ben was working it to actually accomplish whatever tax rate reduction we want to have. So, I know the legal work's been done.
Yeah, the resolution is drafted. We just need to plug in a number.
Right.
And we'll be happy to bring that resolution back as soon as you'd like to.
The thought is, I don't think we should try to... Though we might have preferences where people might want to go, I think I wouldn't care where they decided to go in the city. So, I wouldn't geographically limit its application, even though certain places might have a competitive advantage to secure someone. But, you know, there's lots of land other people have in the city that they might want to put one right across from the Pembroke Meadows Shopping Center by chance.
So, is your thoughts with regard to the technology zone? Is that where you're going back to?
You know, I think, I just don't know it should be geographically restricted personally. I mean, if people want to go there, that's great, but there's other places in the city that people might want to be at and if they do, that's great. And that's one thing. And I know you said you're being tempered where we go, but I do think if you're thinking about getting back to STEM jobs, you know, STEM jobs are really based upon, I'll call it, digital economy or their technology-enabled disruption. So, I think if we're really trying to change in the long run our labor mix, I've often said, we're going to have to figure out not how to have taxes on things that produce wealth and tax transactions that come out of wealth. So, I think it's to our advantage to look at expanding beyond not just data centers because that's limited employment, I know, but the things that are using technology to create, whether it's create a service or to create a product or the other day, you brought in the digital printers or whatever, which are the higher labor productivity and pay more, well, then we get the benefit of the spinoff from the labor and the labor dollars and transactions, but that's where the job growth is. And so, I think we need to make sure that our fiscal policy, it's just like someone having a career and they take a cut in pay to get off the highway they're on because it's dead-ended, to get over somewhere else and they have income growth. Sometimes, we're going to have to take the risk to maybe lose some revenue streams we have because the revenue stream of the economy that's coming has greater potential than if we try to play it safe and stay on the stagnant highway. And so, I don't know that we always have to have revenue neutrality, in my personal opinion. There is a place, I believe, Mr. Mayor, City Manager, where risk-taking, that's measured risk-taking, but risk-taking is worth it to get off the highway we're on and to get on the highway we want to be on. And I think that's, well, I think we have to do some of that personally to get to the thing that leverages this foundational investment, but I'm all in favor of this. This makes sense.
Well, I think what we'll do, Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry. Go ahead. I was going to say, we will bring forward with concurrence with Legal, a draft document with regard to a resolution to establish a special subclass.
I just wanted to, real quickly, I wanted to thank Warren and Scott and Rob and Phil. You know, I think that this is something, and Manager Hanson, you know, this is something that is going to not only put us in the game, this is going to put us in the catbird seat. And I know from having conversations that we are going to be able to attract many of these opportunities. And so, I just hope that we can move forward as expeditiously as possible and thank you all for all the work, and not only on the tax program, but on the work that you do going to all the conferences, all of the trade shows. This is making a big difference. Virginia Beach is out there, not only in the United States, we're out there in the world and it's making a big, big difference. So, keep up the good work.
Will do. Thanks so much.
Thank you very much. Appreciate all y'all's hard work. We're looking good. All right, let's get to the un-audited financial results, please.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Members of Council.
Patty, we welcome you.
We are here once again. Kevin, are you getting that up? The, I know that it's very helpful to Council to have what happened in fiscal '17. Even though these are not audited numbers, we thought it'd be important to bring you what we do have forward so you can kind of have an...
I bet you they're pretty close.
They better be.
They better be.
We believe they are. But the audit actually is just beginning. Now, we began, we closed out August 12th and since that time, we've been in the process of converting from a cash basis that you usually get every month to the modified accrual. We're taking expenses that were paid in FY '18 that belonged to '17, get those into '17, any revenues that were billed out in '17, get those in there. So, we're still doing a lot of analysis, developing work papers, but again, the auditors have begun their work. So, I wanted to recognize a couple people. Don Barnett, City's Controller, Miriam Woodson, who's Principal Accountant, and of course, Kevin Kilbasa, Senior Accountant here, and of course, Taylor Adams is here. I asked him to sit in as well.
We're glad to have all of you here.
And they did most of the work here. We're going to do a snapshot here. We're not, I'm going to try not to do the work paper overload or the spreadsheet overload. The general fund, we're going to spend a little more time on. We're going to touch on the schools, the water and sewer, stormwater, the tip fund, and that's pretty much it. We will come back in December and give you the full audit. But this next slide is if you don't look at anything else, this is the one to look at, and I will spend a little time just walking you through that. We ended up with $11.7 million over our revenue budget, 1.1%. That's, I'd call that pretty close and good budget projections on the revenue side. Most of it was on the local revenue, which is also indication of our local economy. On the expenditure side, we had an expenditure budget of $1,119.7 million. We spent $1,81.1 million. So, we had between city and schools, 38.6 or 3.4% unexpended. And these include encumbrances. I thought that'd be a clearer picture to kind of show that. And so, at the end of the day, revenues exceeded actual expenditures of $17.3 million. And after recognizing reservations and so forth, and I'll go over in a few minutes, but $118.2 million fund balance at June 30th, which is 10.48% of next year's revenues, well within the City Council's policy between 8 and 12%. So, we had a, I'd call it a good year. This is a busy chart. I'm not going to go over, but other than to say, the green, the real estate, personal property, business license, hotel taxes and meals taxes exceeded budget. Real estate by $2 million, personal property by $6.5 million. And you might remember in '16, personal property was also significantly over budget. Oh, well, real estate was under budget, but business license up a little bit, about $600,000. Hotel and meal taxes, about $200,000 over budget. I received an email from another locality yesterday asking, they were saying they were seeing a drop in some of those taxes and asked how we were doing. And actually, we gave them through September and I said, "We're not seeing that yet." But they were. It was Williamsburg. I put sales tax in blue. Sales tax did not make budget, but it still collected more than it did last year. So, the budgeting was just a little more aggressive than what actually happened. I want to go over some of the major revenues, just a snapshot reminder. Real estate, $2 million over, 3.3% from last year on an actual-to-actual basis. Remember, last year, just a tad under. Personal property, $6.1 million over last year, six and a half this year. And I looked at the makeup of the personal property about, you know, what drove this from year to year, and it appears that we don't have that many more cars, but they're valued at a higher value. So, I know personally, I bought some new cars. A lot of people purchase new vehicles. So, the assessed values, values for taxing is a little high. This, I'm not going to spend a lot of time on, other than you can see the trend on the 1% local sales taxes continue to go up, business license continues to go up, utility tax is sort of flat, telecommunications, we know is we're not seeing any growth there, franchise fees, we're not going to see too much there, automobile license is flat, cigarette tax is higher from last year, surprising, hotel tax up and meal tax up. I think that's a measure of what's going on in our economy, so we had growth from $222.5 to $230 million in that timeframe. General fund expenses, this is just a little more breakout. Our departments under-expended by $20.7 million primarily salaries and fringe benefits. That service was a little bit under.
Access taxation.
And of course, capital projects and transfers, these are budgeted and these are just transferred as to whatever Council appropriated. That's on the city side. On the schools, you might remember the reversion, what they don't spend is a reversion number that Council will be asked to appropriate at a later point in time. They'll come forward probably next month. Here's our general fund balance. Inventories and loans are reserved out. You might remember, the majority of our loans are either to Vanguard Landing and our rescue Some money set aside for Community Services Board, the school reversion and the school revenue sharing, and I'll go over those a little bit further in a minute. Council appropriated $23.4 million... Council appropriated 23.4 million for the city CIP, 0.4 for the school operating budget, 3.6 for the school CIP, Waste Management Fund, 5.7, various carryforwards, and we are going to be coming back with an appropriation request for risk management, the ERP project, the timekeeping project, and North End Engine Company. Come back to a total of 71 million, bringing us to that 118.2 million. Again, that 10.48. History of our fund balance, top line is the percent of the revenues, and the bars are simply the $10,000. So from 2008 to 2017, there's not a whole lot of difference, but a little bit of change in the middle. Schools, this is schools had revenues under budget of 3.7 primarily from the Commonwealth and the state share of sales tax. Under-expended these categories, we converted everything to the actual items as opposed to the four you usually see, by 20.8, leaving the reversion of 17.1. Now, according to what the City Council policy, if certain city revenues are over budget, then the schools would share in those as well. And when we do that calculation, that's an additional 3.1 million. The two of them together is 20.2 million.
True up.
True up. Water and sewer, snapshot there. Sale of water and charges for service were above budget, and on the expenditure side, they were under budget primarily on operations and debt service. Net change of position, 3.5 million. I know what the question you may ask is, they have, they do have a lot of cash. That's the Mayor's next question, right?
We're going to bother.
You know they have a lot of cash.
I'm going to get that for you. It's 103.8 million today.
How much?
103 today.
Thank you.
Unrestricted.
As much as the cities.
Yeah.
Do you have a breakdown of where all that money is?
For the water and sewer?
The 103.
The reserve.
Oh, the city's, the general fund money?
No, no. The schools.
Oh, no, that was, that was water.
This is, this is water.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
This is water and sewer fund. No, we know exactly where all the cash is.
I was getting ready to say deja vu.
Stormwater finished the year well. They were slightly over budget on the revenues and slightly under budget on the expenditure, so they're tightly controlled. This is just for certain Council members who might like to see the, how the certain tourism investment program funds finished. Slightly over budget because some of our tourist-related revenues did do pretty well. The big thing is we had budgeted a reserve for future projects, which of course didn't get spent. So we ended the year with an increase in fund balance, but the fund balance at June 30th is 13.5 million for that fund. So just, this is a recap at a very high level. We finished within our policy. Reservations are primarily what City Council has already appropriated, and we'll start the cycle again. The five-year forecast will be coming up next month, and you'll get your full audit in December, and the budget will be presented next March, and we'll start all over again.
I could hardly wait to have the five-year forecast. Always so.
Okay. Any, yes, sir?
I have two questions. One, the City Manager mentioned, I don't know if it was at the retreat or what environment about, in light of what he had seen and assessed about the need to increase the size of our fund balance in light of, to be more resilient. And I don't know when he had thought about putting that in place, it's maybe it's more a question, but I noticed that we didn't, we didn't take advantage to maybe reduce some expenditures and instead boost up our balance there, so maybe didn't plan on doing that till the next budget. But I do think increasing our reserve account in light of what we've seen other communities experience is a prudent thing to do, so I'm just passing on my encouragement to do that at a more aggressive pace than that reflected. But I'd like to go back to the school, and you can pick any of the things that show the true up with the school system. And I want to, you may recall, they built the budget back in November that we got based on what they anticipated, they thought the revision would be. The Council majority here gave them a tax increase that was way in excess of the actual requirement in the year of execution, which is the current year to do full-day kindergarten, by over $4 million. Four million bucks. So now we're in a situation, because we have lots of deeds in the city, they're going to, so we, so they've gotten all they said that they needed plus stuff, money for things, they said they needed 6.5 million for, but they only need about 2 million bucks more at most. So they got a healthy amount of cash for a nonrequirement. So now we had a revenue true up. So I understand by our policy, they're owed the 3.1, got that, but by policy, they're not entitled to the 7.1 million dollars. All I'm asking this body to think about, because they may have the highest requirement, but we fully funded everything they said they wanted. I think we need to ask ourselves, for that additional $3 million, is that better cleaning out additional ditches for people whose places flooded? Is the better $3 million in our reserve fund? I think that should be a conscious discussion.
But also, could it be used on the school side that's needed also?
But they need to come in and explain, our policy would be, just to get a resolution and we write a check. I'm just saying, there needs to be a healthy discussion. I'm not saying what the answer should be, but at the same time, they can tell us what they did with the 4.5 million dollars that they didn't need for full-day kindergarten that we raised taxes for. And that's all I'm saying. That shouldn't just be a fait accompli, it should be a discussion.
All right. Any other questions or comments? We thank you, Patty. Thanks for, to you, you and your entire staff, we really appreciate y'all taking care of these numbers.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going into City Council comments.
I don't know how many, I encourage anyone who hasn't read this report to read this, this is very good reading, but like always, it's always the chart you want, it's not in here, so you make it yourself. But when you go to page 162, on page 161, they talk about just average pay for different localities, like Northern Virginia, $33.12, that doesn't surprise anyone. But the best chart was the one said, adjusting average salaries or average hourly wage for cost of living. So while Washington DC had a nominal salary, the average wage of $33.12 an hour was their nominal, their adjusted for cost of living in, was $23.44, adjusting for cost, basically 30% deduction, so that's pretty significant. Talk about how competitive we were, that's why I'm trying to mention these points. It was interesting that Raleigh was actually up a buck. So actually, their average wage is, went up because of their cost of living is low. Now for Hampton Roads, we went up, we went down 53 cents. So we're saying that basically our average cost of, you know, our cost of living basically diminishes in hourly wage, but we're still not that far different from the adjusted wage of Washington DC of $23.44, it's basically a buck difference. So in reality, when you look into the competitive labor market for professional work, for an average person doing that, it means they make an extra 2,000 bucks to enjoy all the intensity that Northern Virginia offers. So I do think that our community, when you look at the quality of our life compared to the quality of, and I've lived there twice, might I add you, so I speak from experience. I'm just saying that when you do, we do this chart, it's also interesting to note that most people with high wages don't have white rail, and the places that do have lower wages, but that's just probably coincidence.
It's amazing why Amazon once hit $100,000 a year per job.
But also remember, these are the total jobs, and I suspect when you look at STEM jobs, you probably would see less labor variance because of the competitiveness for the skill. So you've got to be careful about averages, but I just wanted to share that our, our labor market is much more competitive than what people might suggest when you adjust for cost of living, though our cost of living is higher than Raleigh, higher than Richmond. Richmond, in fact, is up a buck 43 an hour after you adjust for cost of living, that's how much we're going to make. So it's not, so there are some things to get out of here, and I know our public, our Economic Development Department's probably done that kind of work, but I just wanted to point out that we are much more competitive than sometimes people think, and you might make that extra 15 grand, but you really are not any further ahead, in fact, you're behind mainly because of the cost of housing.
I tell people that all the time, and especially when we compare out west, okay?
There you go.
Johnny?
Mr. Mayor, since we met last time with JT Walk was a wild success, and I'm happy to announce, you've gotten heard already, that Camp Grom is now fully funded, $16 million privately raised to do something very, very exciting for disabled children and wounded veterans, and it is going to be completed, everything should, including the auditorium, should be complete by the end of this year and turned over for service in the first part of 2018 to the YMCA for operation. Really, really, if you haven't been out there to see it, it's something, something pretty spectacular.
It's all great news, great news, great news. Any other Council comments? Okay, let's do the agenda, Mr. Vice Mayor.
All right.
Please.
Okay, under ordinances and resolutions, anybody have any comments on any other?
I do. Let me just find which one is. On resolution two, I'm voting for this, but there's a lot of detail in the, Mr. City Manager, in those recommendations and finding and actions that have programmatic consequences that are asking for money, and I don't want anyone to confuse it because we're voting for the overall policy, that that means we're signing up, that we're going to fund all the things on the timeline that those actions would require. I just think some of that stuff's not fiscal reality, but I do agree with the intent of it, but I don't, I'm not, don't come back and say, "If you voted for this, you owe me a check."
Also, please note on 7A, I will be abstaining.
Yeah, I've got that.
Thank you.
Okay, under planning, first item, waived church in Lynn Haven. Anybody have any comments on that?
I'm going to suggest we go forward.
Two, Evergreen Virginia, conditional use permit, modification of conditions. Everybody okay? I got you everything.
Yeah. Yes, sir.
Three, metamorphosis salon and spa and the enterprises, I'm fine. Four, Allen Zinc for conditional use permit, Lynn Haven. Anybody, the planning commission's recommended denial, staff recommendation was for approval.
And as y'all know, Jim is not here. I've talked to the city attorney, and I'm going to ask the city attorney to advise us as to the legality of this application if it's not approved. And is that fair?
Sure.
Okay, and then someone else will have to make a motion, and John will be happy to make the motion. Did you say something, Barbara?
I would just ask, too, this one seems a little different from others in that, I guess this facility is going to be in the garage and not in the house. Does that make any difference? Your legal responsibility?
It doesn't make any difference with respect to the state law. There is a condition in, in this application that is the same as in all other applications that says that the police department will go out and do a security assessment and make recommendations. I'm just going to, rather than paraphrasing, I'll just read to you what the state code says. "No locality shall adopt or enforce any ordinance, resolution, or motion, and the motion to approve this CUP would be a motion within the scope of this statute governing the purchase, possession, transfer, ownership, carrying, storage, or transporting of firearms, ammunition, or components, or combination thereof, other than those expressly authorized by statute and for purposes of this section." Quote, "A statute that does not refer to firearms, ammunition, or components, or combination thereof, shall be not construed to provide express authorization." So you have a general zoning power, but that general zoning power does not make specific reference to firearms. Therefore, in considering this application, you have to treat the sale of firearms just as you would treat the sale of any other good as a home occupation.
We're going to have this pulled, because we have speakers, I understand. Correct?
Because I have some other questions.
I will make the motion.
We don't have speakers.
You don't have a choice.
Well.
Do we really allow retail sell, what was your motion going to be?
To approve the application.
But do we really allow retail sales in our buildings?
We have been doing it.
As home occupation, anywhere?
Well, I don't think it's really an outbuilding. I think it's part of the home structure. It's, it's the, it's the attached garage, as I understand it.
The picture's attached.
I don't think you could have retail sales in your home at all.
Well, it's, it's.
Federal firearms license, you can't.
And it's not.
I can sell a gun, but not my marketing services.
If you get a federal firearms license.
All right, but it sounds like we don't have any speakers. I'm going to suggest we put this on consent for approval, and if we do have speakers, I will pull it, okay?
All right. Holland South Investments LLC, Rose Hall.
That's fine, that's fine, sir.
And I'm abstaining.
The next one's fine, too.
And I'm abstaining.
Next one's fine?
Yes, sir.
Atlantic Wildfowl Heritage Museum and the City Beach District, John?
I'm fine with that, but I didn't want Council to know that we, that it's in your packet, that we put it up for an annual review and for it to be administratively allowed in future years, but then that was agreed to by the applicant.
Good.
Just for the watching public, I have some calls.
Is that an addition to, is that an additional?
It was, it was already in the packet, so it'll be approving what's in here. I just wanted to make sure Council was aware that was a change from the planning commission to when it came to us.
Eight Eye Candy.
Excuse.
All the, the vendor and all those commercial activities would be subject to taxes like any other commercial enterprise would be. I have some couple of calls, making sure that, I think, just want people watching to know that that's not non-for-profit, that's for profit.
And the other thing, too, is that all of the businesses conducted internal to the site, so there's no, they're not allowed to actually have the queue and stuff like that onto the boardwalk. It all has to be done internal, and they've given, the site plan was actually included in the packet as well.
Item eight, Eye Candy Lash Boutique in Holland Plaza Shopping Center.
You're on a roll, Shane.
That's fine. Lots of tattoos.
There's lots of tattoos. There's so much tattooing going on in Rose Hall.
Note that it's mostly ladies.
How do you know, Ruth?
All right, let's move on.
Cheyenne J. and Jeremy Ryan Sestalas, Bayside, I don't have any problem with.
And I'm abstaining on that one.
Ten, SXCW Properties, two, Third and Bolton Bank, Rose Hall, Shannon?
All right, let me give you guys the latest update on this one. I'm probably going to ask for a deferral till November 7th. I, I'm waiting on a message back here, and I haven't got it yet. We met with the applicant's attorney and the homeowners association, whoever wanted to come at the soccer complex on October 5th. Had a very lengthy meeting. Applicant's attorney announced that night that we were hearing this tonight, October 17th. I'm guessing the community didn't hear him say that, but he did say that, I was there. Ruth then advertised this in the paper as normal. So it was posted. I'm asking for a deferral, not that it's going to change anything, any of our votes probably, however, I did promise the attorney for the homeowners association, Kevin Martengale, that I would let him know when it was on the agenda. I didn't let Kevin know. So just to keep my word, because I said that I would let him know, I am asking for a deferral till November 7th so that we can.
I think that's totally appropriate. I did say, Eddie, we'd like to have two minutes to, to explain the, what he's done. Was he, you okay with that?
Say that again.
Eddie would like to come forward for two minutes to just explain what he's done, and then you make the motion for deferral.
That's fine, and just so that you guys know, and you all have paper here in front of you, but the community had asked for an ingress egress off of Holland Road to lessen the burden off of Old Clubhouse. City engineering and planning took care of that. Now, we moved a dumpster, we added some more buffering, we. Now, we moved a dumpster, we added some more buffering, we, um, did an electric car charging station as a result of one of the citizens' input. So, the, the applicant has really tried to be a good neighbor. It, it all boils down, to the end of the day, the community just doesn't want another car wash less gas station in, in the neighborhood. But, but the buy right development for that piece of property is gonna generate supposedly a lot more traffic than this would, so it's, you know, it's hit or miss, but that's everything as I see it.
But we will have a chance to ask Eddie about this design. He won't be here. Yeah, we will have a chance to ask Eddie about this design when he comes forward.
He's gonna speak, but just by intent with blessing of the district representative that after that, she will make her motion to defer. Okay, the chairman of the interim motion to recess to a closed session pursuant to the exemptions from open meetings allowed by section two point two dash three seven one one A, code of Virginia's amended for the following purposes. Public health property discussion or consideration of acquisition of real property for public purpose or the disposition of public health property where discussion in open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body pursuant to section two point two dash three seven one one A three, Lynn Haven District, Lynn Haven District, Beach District. Public contract discussion of the award of a public contract involving the expenditure of public funds and discussion of the terms or scope of such contract where discussion in open session would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body pursuant to section two point two dash three seven one one A twenty-nine, Dome Site. Legal matters, consultation with legal counsel and briefing by staff members or consultants pertaining to actual or probable litigation where such consultation or briefing in an open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the public body and consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel pursuant to section two point two dash three seven one one A seven, City of Virginia Beach First Wish Duck Real Property, Inc., City of Virginia Beach First Hightower, BRMC, et al. Personnel matters, discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, displeting a resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of any public body pursuant to section two point two dash three seven one one A one. Council appointments, council, boards, commissions, committees, authorities, agencies, and appointees. Do you have a motion?
Some are approved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Ms. Sabbath?
Aye.
Mr. Dyer?
Aye.
Mrs. Henley?
Aye.
Mr. Kane?
Aye.
Mr. Ross?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Wood?
Vice Mayor Geller?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Sessell?
Aye.
Okay.